My name is Roberta Young and I'd like to recognize our two candidates, Mr. Blankenship and Ms. Morecki. We'd like to welcome everybody again to the Candidates Forum sponsored by the League of Women Voters of Northwest Link County. The second part of the forum is for the Wayne County Commission, 9th District. There are two candidates running. They are Republican Terry Morecki and Democrat E. Jason Blankenship. The 9th District covers the city and township of Northville and most of Livonia. The candidates were asked to prepare a one-minute opening statement, one minute to respond to questions, and a two-minute closing statement. To the audience, if you would like to ask questions of these candidates, and we certainly encourage this, please write your question on a card and hand it to one of the lead members who are acting as ushers in the aisle. I will ask as many questions as time allows. The questions should be brief, to the point, and not include personal attacks on the candidates. We reserve the right to screen the questions for duplication and clarity. At this time, we would ask all of our audience members to please be sure their cellphones are silenced. Thank you. We'll start with Mr. Blankenship, your one-minute introduction, please.
Thank you. Again, I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting this wonderful event and really getting here for the grassroots of democracy. My name's Jason Blankenship, and I think that I should be the next Commissioner for District 9 of Wayne County. I believe that we need greater transparency on the Wayne County Commission, and we need to get more for the property tax revenues that we send to Wayne County from the areas of Northville and Livonia. This is an important role. We're talking about a one and a half billion dollar budget that gets spent on an annual basis, and we need more oversight, more transparency, and more accountability for the money that we spend. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Morecki.
Thank you. I am Terry Morecki. I'm running for my third term as County Commissioner. When I started as County Commissioner in 2015, Wayne County was facing several problems. But the three main problems I saw at that point was they were near bankruptcy, they had a failed jail that was sitting there that taxpayers had put up $150 million into, and they also had a reputation that was just pretty abysmal. You say Wayne County people would roll their eyes. Since 2015, I came in when a new administration came in as well. We have eliminated or accumulated structural budget deficits. Ever since halftime, we have passed a budget with a surplus. I'm the only Republican on the Ways and Means Committee. We've been paying down our pension benefits. They were 47% in 2015 funded. Now we're up to 57%, and we're finally stopping. Thank you.
Okay, we'll start the first question with Mr. Blankenship. What can the County Commission do to encourage business development in Wayne County?
The County Commission can encourage business development in Wayne County by making sure that business deals are fair. The business community needs to have, needs to know that there's transparency, needs to know that there's no preferences, that certain business owners don't get a better deal than other business owners, and to know that the opportunities are available for everyone in the community, no matter what their particular bankroll might say.
Thank you, Ms. Morecki.
I think what Mr. Blankenship's talking about happened several years ago, those were suspicions. In the last few years, everything I'm talking about has happened in the last four years or three years. We have a new procurement ordinance and a new procurement system that fairness is really being looked upon and transparency is really being looked upon. We have an economic development group now, and we have a whole, well, it's only three people actually. They're going into the communities and really trying to attract business here any way we can help them, and coming into the mayors and the township supervisors working with them. I think the field has been leveled much more than it was years ago, and I think the problems that I know, I think people thought it was unfair in the past, but those things are changing, and we have really good people at the tap that are trying to make this continuously fair.
Thank you. We'll start the next question with you. How does the role of the County Commission intersect with the roles of local governments and the state legislature?
Let's start with local government first. I think you need to have a really good relationship with local government. I have very good relationships, long-term relationships with local government. Many of them I've served with in different offices, and the newer ones that I started representing in Northville Township, I've interacted much with because the township has a lot of issues with Wayne County, especially with the roads. We also have to have a good relationship with the state, and the state provides a lot of funding. A lot of our funding comes from the state and comes through our committees, and we're like a pass-through. Wayne County's like a pass-through. So it's important to have a special relationship with all of them, especially as roads are a big problem. You have to have a good relationship with the state, so maybe we can work on the funding for that.
Thank you. Mr. Blankenship?
Well, the vast majority of the county's budget is, as Ms. Morecki said, is a pass-through, meaning that the money comes from the state but is also mandated for the expenditures by the state. And so it's very important for the Wayne County Commission and Wayne County to serve as a mediator and intermediary between the state and the local governments. Roads are a very complicated issue, and we all know someone who's had, who's been affected by the roads, and roads are an issue that cross between local government, the County Commission, and the state and the federal government. So we need to work together to meet the needs of our citizens.
Thank you. Ms. Morecki?
Oh, sure.
Sorry, Beth. We're back to you, Mr. Blankenship. I apologize. What are your thoughts about the increase in air pollution caused by the Marathon Oil Refinery in southwest Detroit polluting many communities in Wayne County?
I think that the Marathon Oil Refinery needs to be more regulated. We know that air pollution affects children, it affects the community, it affects just about everything, and we know that it can have long and far-reaching effects on both the people in the community directly and anyone who's downwind of that refinery. We need to do a better job of taking care of, making sure that that refinery doesn't pollute and is responsible for the costs that are passed on to the citizens for the pollution that's released into the atmosphere.
Thank you, Ms. Morecki.
I know the commissioners in that area are very concerned about, not only that, but there's some other projects down there that they're concerned about. Wayne County, when they are, we have a project coming, or anything's affecting the citizens and Wayne County is involved in it, there's a lot of testing that is done. And of course, with any project, if there's any kind of pollutants and they're known to be harmful to the citizens, measures should be taken to hold people's feet to the fire. So, but we don't have problems like that in this area, but there are many commissioners that have different things that they're very, they're very concerned about the pollution. And the county should be holding it accountable if these things are truly pollutants.
Thank you. The next question, we'll start with Ms. Morecki. Do you support the ballot proposal to legalize recreational marijuana? Why or why not?
I don't. This proposal is not a little jatty down the street, not getting caught with a joint and going to jail or to prison. This is a much more complicated proposal than that. In fact, we just had a meeting with Prosecutor's Office, Kim Worthy, and she said there's a huge misconception that people are actually put into jail or prison for pot. One-tenth of the prisoners in Wayne County have a drug-related issue, but it's also with robbery, or it's also with murder. It's not done by themselves. This is out-of-state money that's come into here. We're looking at the model of Colorado, what's happened there with the cartels coming in. This is, this is a complicated issue. This is not, again, a little jatty smoking a joint. This is, could affect especially the Detroit neighborhoods. I know many of the commissioners are against this and worried about their neighborhoods, and we've really been affirmative. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Blankenship?
Could you repeat the question?
Absolutely. Do you support the ballot proposal to legalize recreational marijuana? Why or why not?
I do support the ballot proposal to legalize recreational marijuana. For too long, drugs in this country have been used to target the minority communities, and I believe that people should have the right to make their own decisions when it comes to that. All of the studies that I've seen show that marijuana is by no means even as dangerous as alcohol, and we know that from other jurisdictions where this has already been legalized, that the tax revenues for the municipality have gone up dramatically. So I believe that marijuana ought to be legalized and taxed and regulated, such as any other, anything like alcohol and/or tobacco.
Thank you. The next question, we'll start with Mr. Blankenship. Are you in favor of a mass transit system of buses to connect Detroit with Wayne County suburbs? Why and why not?
I am in favor of a mass transit system to connect Detroit to Wayne County suburbs. I know from talking to other friends who are business owners in the community that one of the problems in the outer suburbs is the ability to get good employees to work. And we need to be able to make sure that people get to go where the jobs are. There are many opportunities that are going unfulfilled in Northville and Livonia, and we need to be able to make sure that people are able to work for a living wage and get to these job opportunities. It strengthens the city, it strengthens the municipality, and it makes the region more attractive to both local business and investment coming from out of state.
I believe it was, I'm trying to think now, I think it was 2006, the citizens of Livonia voted down the smart, switched our bus system to, which is now a bus system for Livonia. The last RTA that was on the ballot did not pass in Northville or in Livonia, and again, when they were going to put the RTA on a couple months ago, they decided not to do that in fear of it not passing. The bus system in Detroit has gotten much more expansive. They're doing some great stuff with what they have now with the Smart Buses, but I think the people in this region right now, they're more worried about infrastructure and potholes and bridges, and maybe when those are all fixed, they'll be willing to do a tax to expand the, expand the bus system or train system, whatever comes up next.
Okay. Mr. Blankenship?
I think it's her first.
Oh, I'm sorry. Did I do that wrong?
No, you're fine. I still think it's her first.
I'm thinking that I've just got to check it the right way. Okay, Terry, it's yours, I guess. I'm sorry.
It's all right.
Do you support ballot proposal two on the redistricting process, or proposal three to make voting more convenient and accessible? Why or why not?
Okay, I'm a no on both of those as well, this negativity here, but I think the redistricting proposal is almost absurd, and again, this is outside money coming in to Michigan to try to sway this, in the fact that people that supposedly have no political interests, no political influence are going to be appointed by people that are political to redistrict lines, and they're not even held accountable for anything. I just think it's a bad situation. When Democrats are in control, they love redistricting. When Republicans are in control, they love redistricting. So now, I think this is a political move because one party's not in control, so I don't think that unelected people should be doing something as important as this. Oh, this next one is, no, promote the vote? No, I was a former city clerk. I don't like the fact that it's same day, and I don't like the fact that you don't have to show an ID. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Blankenship?
Well, as a study contrast, I'm in favor of both proposals. I can't imagine why anyone would not want to make it easier for people to vote and to make it easier for people to have their voice in government. So, proposition three, promote the vote, is very clear to me. As for the redistricting one, I'm reminded that one of the former representatives on that committee said, "What do we need to do to keep all of the Detroit trash in the Democratic districts?" People should have a representative vote, and I believe that we should take the redistricting. And Ms. Morecki's right, when the Republicans are in control, they redistrict. When the Democrats are in control, they redistrict. This should be taken away from the political parties, and it should be made to be a nonpartisan, independent commission that allows for everyone to have an equal vote.
Thank you. We'll start with Mr. Blankenship with the next question. If you had an unlimited budget, what would you choose as your top three priorities for spending that money?
An unlimited budget would be wonderful, but my, my number-one priority in this area would be roads. And I know that the, I know that the Commission is hamstrung in some respects by how the roads are funded, but we could increase the maintenance budget, and we could make sure that roads, such as the mile roads, are kept in better working order, and the other surface streets that the county is responsible for are kept in better working order. So that's number one. Number two is I would make sure that, yeah, I would make sure that the justice system was appropriately funded. And when I talk about that, I'm talking about making sure that there are appropriate number of people working in the system. We spend way too much money on overtime for the employees, and we are also liable for lawsuits because we're not funding those, we're not funding enough people in the jails.
Thank you.
Hi, Adam. Well, this would be a great, it'd be like Christmas. Roads would be the number one. The infrastructure, the whole thing, the bridges that we've had to close from years of neglect that the state came in and said we had to close them. That would be the number one, and I think if you took a poll, the citizens of this county would like that to be the number one. The second one would be the criminal justice system that we're going to be breaking ground in pretty soon, the end of October. I would love to just pour that unlimited money into that so the taxpayers didn't have to pay again what they had to pay for the failed jail. And I would pay the sheriffs a large sum of money as well, because I think government's number-one job is to protect citizens. Our sheriffs are kind of a rotten job, even in the jail, and I think they need more money, but it does cost, costs a lot to bring them up to what other, actually, what other counties are paying theirs.
Okay. Next question's for you, Terry. The county lost over 500 employees as a result of the recession 10 years ago. Does the county have enough employees now? Why or why not?
Sheriffs are a problem. That is a problem. The prosecutor's area is a problem. We stare at our prosecutors probably lower than anybody else around this, you know, Detroit area, and we train them very well because they have very hard cases, then they quit, and they move to another area. Excuse me. So I think that's a problem. I'm on the Ways and Means Committee. We have, we have meetings with every department had, and every elected, and most of them are okay with the people they have right now. It's been a big adjustment through the years because of the budget. A lot of people, you know, those positions went down, but we, the two I mentioned, the most prosecutor and the sheriff, were probably the biggest, the biggest problems about not having enough people. But everybody else, I think, has adjusted. They're doing a lot of work, but they were asking for a lot of people.
Thank you. Mr. Blankenship?
You can call me Jason, please. But, no, I don't think that the county has enough employees. Just to speak about the jails, we are asking the folks that work in the jail to work overtime, and that requires pay, and so we are being penny-wise and pound foolish. We've spent, you know, we've cut the number of employees, but we're paying more because we're paying these people for overtime. And there are other sort of, other consequences from not having adequate staffing, particularly in the jail. The county exposes itself to liability for litigation, for wrongful deaths inside the jail because the prisoners are not adequately or appropriately monitored. And so whatever saving we might have from reducing the workforce is spent in other ways. So we need to make sure that the county is appropriately staffed, and I don't think that we are staffing in an improper way at this point.
Thank you. Terry?
Terry, do.
You start.
I'd like to add something if I could.
Think two of these. Okay. Mr. Blankenship, then. What would you consider to be two or three greatest accomplishments of the Commission in the last year?
Well, I think the recent budget was a good accomplishment, and I think that some of the, I think that some of the restructuring has been great, but I would say that the deal for the jail has actually been one of the great failures of the Commission. I think that we have wound up giving property at an unappraised price to Mr. Gilbert, and I think that that was a mistake. And I think that anyone who's been in those, anyone who's been in those properties knows how valuable they could be, and we sold them to Dana Gilbert for the price that essentially he was willing to pay. We didn't get an outside independent appraisal, and so I think that was actually one of the great failings of the Commission.
Terry?
So you asked for three?
I'm sorry?
You asked for three?
Yes, two or three.
Two or three, okay. I think that to pass a balanced budget the last three years and have surplus is a huge accomplishment because that hadn't happened in probably 10 or 12 years before that. I think we're on our way financially, so I think that's a, that's a huge one. I think we have about $100 million in our fund balance at the end of this year, which is about 20%, which you're supposed to have, like a rainy day fund. So I think that's, that's huge. I think getting to the point where we're building this criminal justice system finally, even though there's a lot of angst for what happened before, this project is moving forward. It's out of downtown Detroit, which many of the people wanted that. It was a complicated process. It took months and months of lawyers on all sides to get this, to get this done, so I think we're heading on a, on a good path that way. It had to be done. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Terry, you get the next beginning question. What is the County Commission doing to attract and retain a competent and professional workforce in the county government?
Well, that has, some of our higher-level jobs, that has been a problem. And just to caveat back, I want to, just something with the sheriffs, too. Yeah, we pay our sheriffs lower, but getting police officers struck from the state down to the locals has been a very difficult feat the last couple years. So this isn't all about pay, even though our sheriffs are paying less. But we are finally giving our employees a 2.5% raise after 12 years, I believe, because the, because our budgets are doing better. So we're hoping that that helps. It's not very much of a raise, but we're trying to get in that direction to keep people more engaged and willing to work at the county. It's a long process. We were almost in bankruptcy.
Thank you.
I don't think that the county is doing enough to attract good and qualified people. I think we need to pay our employees more, and I think we need to be more creative in the way in which we get, we get our employees from, throughout the region. I think this goes back to the issue of the regional transit. We need to be able to make sure that people get to where they need to be, and I think we also need to be able to consider being more flexible in terms of employment and allowing more options for people to work, maybe, you know, flexible time, things like that, in order to get better and qualified people. We are stuck with the budget that we're stuck with, but there are ways to make sure that we are attractive to good and qualified candidates.
Thank you. And we'll start the next question with Mr. Blankenship. Do you aspire to higher political position? If so, what would that position be?
Right. That's an interesting question. Right now, I aspire to be Wayne County Commissioner for District 9.
Okay.
Could you repeat? I didn't hear exactly what you said.
Yes. Do you aspire to a higher political position? If so, what would that position be?
I don't. I never, I never have ever aspired to the next position. Something's happened where I've moved out of the next position. I'm perfectly happy being a Wayne County Commissioner in the 9th District.
Thank you. Okay, we'll start with Terry for this question. What services do you wish the county would provide for residents that are not being provided now?
I don't know. We provide a lot of services, and if we don't provide the services, the locals provide the services. And you can see what those services are, especially in Livonia and Northville, where there's a lot of wonderful things, you know, recycling, trash pickup. We've got, we've got, we're really blessed around in these areas. Wayne County provides so many services, especially for people that are in need. We get so, I'm on the Health, I'm the Vice Chair of the Health and Human Services. The millions of dollars that come through the feds to the state to Wayne County, we provide a lot of things for kids that are in trouble legally, for people that, you know, meals on wheels, for seniors that need help, for veterans that need burial, need clothing. We really hit the whole gamut, I believe, and then if you're talking about day-to-day services and garbage, the locals are doing that type of thing. A lot of money goes into Wayne County. Thank you.
Thank you. Jason, would you like to?
Yeah, please. One of the things that I would like to see provided by Wayne County is I'd like to see Wayne County take a greater role in providing mental health treatment and care for the folks that work in the sheriffs and the folks that work with the police, because what they have is a very difficult job, and it's a very hard thing that they do on a daily basis. And I'd like to see Wayne County acknowledge that and provide that benefit to, to the police force and the sheriffs, mostly because I think that it would help, you know, it would help them process the difficult job that they have to do, and also it would, it could very well lead to a reduction in liability for some of these other, these other court cases that come against the county.
Thank you. Jason, we'll start with you for the next one. There has been an unfinished jail in Detroit for several years. Recently, a plan was approved by the county to build the jail in a different location. What are your views about the new plan for the jail?
I was opposed to the plan for the jail, the new jail. I think we should have just followed through and finished what we started. I think that the reason for that is the move from downtown to the, to the location at the former DDOT site, we didn't take into account the possible environmental problems. There wasn't, there wasn't enough study done before that site was chosen. We haven't done the full environmental analysis yet. We don't know what the costs are going to be yet, but we've committed to that. Additionally, we allowed the properties, the front Marty Hall of Justice, the fatal jail, and some of the other court systems to be sold to Mr. Gilbert without having independent appraisal of the value of that property, and I think that that was a mistake. Additionally, we, we have this contract for the juvenile program that we don't need.
Thank you. I will agree on one point with Mr. Blankenship. I, the juvenile- I, the Juvenile Justice Center, we're now required by law to have. That was kind of a sticking point with me, but it's part, part of the process, and I wasn't going to vote down the entire jail because of the juvenile justice system, or the Juvenile Justice Center. There were appraisals on the property. There were a lot of opinions on what that property was worth. I don't think, I think maybe one commissioner didn't think that that happened, the rest of us did. I'm very comfortable with that. The environmental, there were a lot of tests done, a big thick book of tests on the environmental, the soil, and the, and the air of that property. And now that we're going to be digging into the property, we will have to keep, keep going down and seeing if there's any issues. If there's any issues, they will be cleaned up. We actually have a 50-50 split with Dan Gilbert and Wayne County on the environmental issues. After, I think it's $10 million, both people can stop the whole project.
Okay. We'll start the next question with you, Terry. Outreach to residents is important. What do you do now, or what will you now, what would you do to improve connections with Wayne County citizens?
Oh, gosh, I think I'm very available. My, my email, my phone number is on the website. I send out a newsletter a couple of times a year. I go to as many things as I can. I'm very open to meeting with people. I have monthly hours that I alternate between Livonia and Northville. I think I'm very accessible. I think I've always been known to be very accessible ever since I've been elected official. And anybody that wants to call me, a lot of time I give them my cellphone number. I have a great assistant who is on top of everything when I get it, and I, I've never been accused of not being accessible.
Thank you. Mr. Blankenship?
I think, thanks. I think one of the easy things that the county commission could do to increase outreach would be to videotape and disseminate the, the meetings. Again, we have a very large budget that we administer, and if you want to go and see the meetings, you have to take off work and go down and do that. This seems like a very cost-effective way to make sure that the citizens of Wayne County know what we're doing with their money. And I think that that is a, that's a simple thing that I would very much like to see the commission do. Additionally, like Terry, I'm, I'm very accessible, and if elected, you obviously would have office hours and disseminating my cellphone and emails to the people who may hold to me to address any of the questions or concerns that they may have.
Thank you. The next question, we'll start with you, Jason. Does the county executive answer to the county commission or vice versa, or do they operate independently? Do you think the current structure works well, or should it be revised?
Well, I do think that the current structure works reasonably well. I think that the, the county commission and the executive serve as, as co-equal branches of government and offset one another. And anytime that there is a, anytime that there is a government, there is a necessary trade-off between a streamlining of benefits and services and making sure that diverse voices are heard, to make sure that, you know, Wayne County is a large organization encompassing a lot of different, you know, a lot of different people. And we need to make sure that the county commission is strong and serves as a counterweight to the unified executive.
Thank you. I just want to piggyback on the last one too. He, Mr. Blankenship dropped my memory. We are talking about recording our meetings and live streaming them at this point. It's a very low cost, and we've already had a meeting on yet, so I think that'll be happening in January for both our, for both meetings, the voting meetings and the committee meetings. Yes, I mean, we're a co, we're co-equal, the executive and the legislative branch. The commission is the legislative branch. I will say, in 2015, when we all came together, there's probably 10 commissioners that were on before 2015, so the rest of us are new. There was definitely a tug of war between the new executive and the commission, which was always in the newspapers. I'm sure you recall that, especially under consent, the consent agreement, there was a lot of bucking back and forth. That has smoothed over. We still have some issues, but we are in charge of the budget. When we get it, get it from the executive, and they're two different, they're two different branches of government. We have to have a really strong commission to keep that going. Thank you.
Thank you. Terry, we'll start with you on this one. Does the county commission have the authority to vote its members a raise? If so, what conditions should be considered before a raise is approved?
I believe they probably do. I, I don't know, but that, that issue has not come up, so I, I don't know. I think this is, be a time that'd be a very shaky, shaky subject now for the commission to give itself raises. I do think our other elected officials are grossly underpaid, the prosecutor, the register of deeds, the clerk, the treasurer, they're compared to other counties. They're, they're grossly underpaid, and I, I do believe we have the ability to do that, and most likely the commission as well.
Okay.
Did you ask my opinion about it, or just if we did?
Uh, I think it was a...
Uh, yeah. If so, what conditions should be considered before a raise is approved?
Well, right now, I, I don't, with the commission, I don't think there's, it should be done right now.
I'm loaded by training and having read the charter, unless it's specifically prohibited, I think that the commission could give itself a raise. That said, I do not support giving a raise to the commission members at this time. I think that that would be money better spent taking care of our other employees.
Okay. Well, it is about eight minutes to, so this will be the final question, and we'll start with Jason. The county controls almost all of the service streets in the townships of Wayne County. What would you do to improve the roads in the townships?
Well, first of all, we need to do more studies about where the money is going and making sure that it is going to the most highly trafficked areas. I know that we use the Pacer system that talks about the conditions of the roads, but we need to really make sure that the funding goes to where it is best needed. Additionally, I would be vigilant about making sure that money is not spent for projects that don't need to be done. Our roads are in awful shape, and I know that this is, again, it's a complicated issue, but we have state funding and we have local funding, we have federal funding, but we need to make sure that we get the most value for our dollars when it comes to taking care of the roads. And so, you know, we need to, we need to really make sure that the money is spent well and allocated across the service streets.
The townships are in a bad situation with this, the money in the road. Commissioner Barone and I, he covers Canton and Plymouth, we've been, we were a big, huge proponent, proponent to continue the neighborhood reconstruction program that was actually put into place, I think, in about 2012. So we're continuing that with each budget. This is for townships, and they're going to get road money for their neighborhoods. Now, Northville Township is being pretty innovative. Their neighborhoods are actually raising money, and, and they're going in jointly with Wayne County to get their neighborhood roads done. I think people are going to have to be creative like that. Livonia is putting in 20% right now for the road, Farmington and Plymouth Road Project. The state in 50 years has not solved this problem, the road funding. I think each community is going to have to look and see what's going on. Right now, we're hiring a company in Wayne County that's going to assess every single road, and that's it.
Terry, there, you can start in two minutes closely.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Lee. This is always very nice that you do this in this area, because a lot of areas don't do this, so I truly appreciate it. I'm running again. This'll be my third term if I am chosen. For Wayne County Commissioner, I just want to tell you a little bit about myself, if you don't know who I am. My family moved here when I was six months old to Livonia. My parents raised five kids. I stayed here and raised my four children, and now two of my four grandsons also are here. We all went to Livonia Public Schools. The citizens of Livonia have been very wonderful to me, hiring me as Board of Education member for Livonia Public Schools. Then I went to the city council for several years. Then I was chosen as a city clerk here for several years, and now I'm in the Wayne County Commission, but this is a little bit different because now I have the honor of serving not only Livonia, but Northville Township and part of the city of Northville. Wayne County right now is on a roll going forward. I didn't have enough time. I could spend like two hours saying all the positive things that have started in the last three years. I would love to continue and be on this momentum of improving, because if Wayne County isn't strong, it brings down all the other 43 communities, the townships and the cities. So the stronger we get and can help out with businesses and, and roads, it's, it's better for everybody. So I, I would like to stay and do this momentum. One other thing I couldn't bring up too, there's some great projects coming up. Heinz Park is being looked at right now. We had our first meeting this morning with everybody, a 10-mile stretch where all the mills will be redone and like to restaurants and to coffee shops, and there'll be connectivity to all this. It's a great project. I think the citizens will really like this. It, it, you know, it's just starting out, but it's something that's really positive. We can do that now because we have more money. So thank you. Please vote for me on November 6th.
Thank you. Mr. Blankenship?
Thank you. Again, I'd really like to thank the League of Women Voters for having us here tonight and allowing us to talk about the issues that face Wayne County. My name's Jason Blankenship, and I would like to be the next commissioner for Wayne County District Nine. By training, I'm a trial lawyer. I went to the University of Michigan for law school, and I've lived in the community and I've lived in southeast Michigan for the vast majority of my life, save for about four years when I was out of state. There are a number of issues that face this, this community, and we need to make sure that we are cognizant and we are aware that the finances and the economy are cyclical. We can't act as if the good times are continuous and, and that bad times are never going to come back. We need to be making sure that the residents of Northville and Livonia get the money and get the services that they paid for. We spend a lot of money in property taxes, and we need to be making sure that we're getting the return on our investment. I believe that the commission needs to serve as a strong counterweight to the chief executive, Mr. Evans, and I believe that we need to have a stronger voice on the commission. I would support that you vote for me as Wayne County Commissioner for District Nine, and I urge you to vote on November 6th. Thank you.
Thank you. We'd like to thank the candidates who participated in tonight's forum for the Ninth District Wayne County Commission and the school board. We thank the city of Livonia for allowing us to use the city hall for the forum this evening. Our forum has been videotaped and can be viewed on our website, leagueofwomenvotersnorthwestway.org, around the 7th of October. We also thank the candidates for their willingness to serve the public and to the audience, few that are left, for such thoughtful questions. We went through 18 in your part of the meeting. All of the candidates were also invited to participate in the League of Women Voters Voter Guide, a publication that can get, be accessed online by going to vote411.org. Print copies will be available in the libraries the week of October the 8th. We urge voters to review the responses of the candidates on the voter guide before voting absentee or at the polls on Election Day. This is especially important this year, since for the first time in 100 years, Michigan voters will not be able to vote a straight party ticket option. So it's important to remember to study the candidates, vote the entire ballot, including the nonpartisan judicial races and the three ballot proposals. Election Day is November 6th, and the polls are open 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. If you vote in person, you will be asked for a picture ID. But if you do not have a picture ID or don't have it with you, you can still vote by signing an affidavit of identity. We urge you all to be participants in our democracy by making educated choices in the November election. This concludes our forum for this evening, and thank you all for attending.